Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the regular scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting to order for August 19th, 2019, 6:30 PM. As you may know, we work from a prepared and agenda. First item for business is going to be the invocation. At this point in time, I'd like to ask Apostle Juan Munoz and Prophet Cruz Munoz to come forward. They're with the World of Peace International Church in Reedsville. They'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Charlie Hall. Please rise.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the honor to coming in Rockingham County and pray.
We appreciate you inviting us to pray. Let us pray, please. Almighty God, I know that this city belongs to you, and this meeting is for the best of the city. As we pray every day for Rockingham County and for the city where we are, I pray for the leaders of the city right now, Lord. And I ask you to bring your hand upon them and lay it on your hand to them in order that they can receive the knowledge, the wisdom, the encouragement, and the strength to take the decision, the right decision for the best way to govern this city, this county. Lord, I ask you right now to send spiritual wisdom to them. This is supernatural wisdom that you gave to Salomon. He received the wisdom to make to be the one of the best king on the bus. Now, the center spirit will come to the meeting here, the president of the county, and all people gathering here to discuss the business of this city and this county. Thank you, Lord, because I know that today you will do the best for what we need in Rockingham County. Bless everybody here and allow them, Lord, to move forward with all projects that you put into their heart, because you are one that set up government and take off government. In the name of Jesus Christ, thank you. Amen.
Please remain standing, face our flag, and render the appropriate respect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, you've had the opportunity to look at the agenda for the last week. Is there any additions or deletions on the agenda? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion for approval.
I got a motion by Commissioner Travis for approval.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item number five will be recognition. First, I'd like to call Mr. Emmett Scholes and the Honorable Mark Pegram, who's going to administer the oath to Mr. Scholes for the Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
Do you, Emmett Scott Scholes, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Rockingham Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor, so help you God?
I will.
And do you, Emmett Scott Scholes, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithfully bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you, Emmett Scott Scholes, do swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of your office of Rockingham Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor according to the best of your skill and ability, according to laws, so help you God?
I will.
That way. Chris, what's his name?
Get Lance to help you with that. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a statement before Scott, before you leave. I want to congratulate you publicly on being chosen for this position and agreeing to serve. There's nobody better qualified or more experienced than Rockingham County, and for all the years that you've previously served, I want to give you some recognition here, and I just can't think of anybody better qualified and more loyal to the county than you. So, thank you so much for stepping forward to serve in this position.
All righty. Our next item on the agenda is the safety awards. Mr. Manager, I believe you're going to have Chris Elliott come forward to...
Chris Elliott.
Chris Elliott, safety. Mr. Manager, come forward, please.
Gentlemen, if we're going to remain here, let him call everyone up, and then they could take a picture with us seated.
Mr. Chairman, can I address the board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Board of Commissioners. I am honored to stand before you tonight as you conduct the business of the people responsibly and with integrity, with the common goal to protect the health and safety of our employees and our citizens. As part of our governmental responsibility and the Honorable Board's vision for this county, we as staff, directed by the just leadership of the county manager, are committed to continuous improvement of the health and safety performance throughout daily operations. Mr. Chairman, your dedication and the Board's dedication to safety and health of our employees and the citizens of Rockingham County is evident throughout the county, all the way to the doors of the Commissioner of Labor's office in Raleigh. I received a letter last month responding to applications I filed in January of this year from the North Carolina Department of Labor, Commissioner of Labor, Cherie Berry. Included in that, Rockingham County received 14 safety and health awards from the Commissioner of Labor. That's to be commended. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I would like to call out the award-winning departments and ask their representatives to come forward and stand in front of y'all, and the Board could take a picture at the end with the group, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
We have nine departments who received first-year gold awards. As I call your department's name, if the representative would please get up and walk to the front. These departments are 911, the Board of Elections Department, the Economic Development, Finance Department, the Internet Technologies Department, the Rockingham County Landfield, the Rockingham County Library System, the Register of Deeds Office, the Department of Social Services. These departments are the first-year gold recipients. We also have five departments who have received a second consecutive year gold award. These departments are the County Manager's Office and the Legal Department, the Fire Marshal's Office, the Human Resources Department, Rockingham County Inspections Department, and the Public Health Department. Before the picture that we take, Mr. Chairman, and the Honorable Board, and Mr. Manager, this reflects well on the leadership and the dedication to OSHA compliance from the Rockingham County Honorable Board of Commissioners and our exceptional county manager. This also reflects well on the departmental leadership of the county exemplified before us. Sincerely, on behalf of risk management, thank you all for your patriotic and valuable service to the citizens and the staff of this wonderful county and state that we live in, and may God bless you all.
Chris, just going to stand behind you. Come on, Floty. May we slide on wide. Get a little closer. Turn inside with us. Turn inside with us.
Hold people in the front.
Don't fall over. Turn right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you, Michael. Great job. Thank you very much. Go back. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. These are non-controversial items that you've had an opportunity to review and had an opportunity to ask any questions to anybody in the audience that is interested. If you have any questions concerning any of the consent agenda items, feel free to contact our county manager. They'd be glad to discuss any of these items with you. With that in mind, gentlemen, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Berger. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, public comments. We have three people signed up to speak tonight. Mr. Manager, if you would, go over our rules of conversation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing the members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks should be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson shall open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Each citizen shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. I will time the speakers and notify the chairman of their limit. The time clock will start with three minutes and less yielded time to six minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you are to yield time or time is yielded to you, then please let the chairperson know in advance. Speakers will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person of which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official capacities. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. First person signing up to speak tonight is Mr. Jim Fink. Mr. Fink, if you'd come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jim Fink. I'm with 405 Wedgewood Court in Eden. Just wanted to take a couple minutes of your all's time tonight, and thank you for the weekend before last. We, with my kids, was over at the Youth Outdoors event over in Reedsville. Thought that was a really good event that you all put on and sponsored. I know the Sheriff Department was there as well, the range officers, the folks that did the fishing, the demonstrations, the archery. Both my boys and my neighborhood son there had a good time, and they normally go out and do a lot of running in the mornings on Saturdays. We'd do a lot of 5Ks, but this one weekend, we didn't have anything going on, so it allowed us a chance to come down and experience that. My youngest, who's my runner, really enjoyed fishing. I think he spent two out of the three hours out on the lake. I think he asked him to do a lot of the archery, and they definitely liked the weapons. They didn't like that 20-gates kick so much, but hey. I think it's important that everybody knows that of about 100-some kids that was out there that day, that that's, in my opinion, not enough. My kids spend a great deal of my time outside, and I think that's important. I think we're in a good county for that. I don't like being around the cities. I think Rockingham County is just the right place to raise a kid, notwithstanding some of the problems that we have that are being addressed. But as you can tell, except for tonight, my kids are normally outside, not on electronics. We don't normally allow a whole lot of that, but it keeps them quiet tonight, so that helps out. But I just wanted to thank you again for the event that you all sponsored and helped put on, and hope to see a lot more of it. Just as a side note, I would like to see something in the schools with this, because I think the gun safety part of it is something that we don't talk enough about. We hear a lot of the negative side on the news. We need to hear more of the positive side, and I think this was a step in the right direction for our county to put that out in the forefront, so everybody can get on board with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ann Brady, if you'd come forward, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Hey, I'm Ann Brady, 3190 NC 65 Reedsville. It's good to be here again. I've missed you all. I'm here to talk about the Board of Elections, and I believe in fairness, those of you who know me, and that's all of you. I just promote fairness everywhere, whatever party, whatever you believe. I like fair elections. Right now, I believe that county employees should all be treated fairly, which means equally. My question is why the three employees of the Board of Elections are being singled out and not being treated the same as the other government employees? And one of you understands. Thank you. You took all of the shared savings away from the Board of Elections and did not do this for any other department, not the sheriff, not the Register of Deeds, not the Tax Department, not the Finance, whatever. Why 100% Board of Elections and 20, or maybe 30%, for the other departments? You cut all overtime pay for our people in the Board of Elections. I don't think that's fair, because you didn't do that anywhere else. You cut in half the temporary employees' hours. The Board of Election employees will have to cover what those people were doing at this point. They get paid a lot more, and if they accrue, well, they can't get overtime pay, so they'll accrue leave pay, and if they leave you, you're going to pay them out when they leave, and it's going to be a lot more money. So, I think you need to do that. You also have zeroed out all their precinct official money. That was $110,000. So, I may have some of my facts wrong. I may not be completely on target with everything, but when you look at this whole list, it just looks unfair, and I just ask you all to revisit what you've done to the Board of Election employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doug Isley, if you'd come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hey, Doug Isley, Rockingham County, 1790 Flat Rock Road, also on the Board of Education. Just wanted to take a minute to thank you, Mr. Chair, and Board members for your cooperation with the new school board. I have good communications with all of you, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to come forth this evening and let everybody know we appreciate the last meeting where you let me announce that we had an auction. That auction was a great success, and we've got another one coming up on September 21st at 9:30. The first one's going to be at 212 Lawsonville Avenue in Reedsville, and then we'll be at 920 Johnson Street. Again, it's September 21st at 9:30. Also, wanted to announce that we're going to have our Stuff the Bus campaign on this Friday and Saturday, the 23rd and the 24th. Friday, both of those dates are from 9 to 6, and they're at the Reedsville Walmart, Eden Walmart, and the Maedan Walmart. So, would greatly appreciate folks in the community coming out to help our teachers in our classrooms and get some equipment, pencils, paper, tape measures, whatever, or rulers, not tape measures. The last thing is a safety thing. Our traditional school is getting ready to start on the 26th. There's no job or appointment that anybody has got to be at so quick that you've got to run a stop-school bus sign and endanger the life of any of our children in Rockingham County. So, just, I want everybody to be vigilant. When that stop sign comes out, don't try to run it, because it's not good. I think that's seven points, and you don't want that. But more than that, we don't want to endanger the lives of any of our children, and just wanted to thank y'all, gentlemen, for allowing me to come up and speak about that.
Thank you, Mr. Isley. All right, gentlemen, that concludes our public comments. Item number eight on the agenda, Ms. Melissa Bunker with Cardinal Innovations, presentation of a quarterly report.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. How are you all tonight? Thanks for having us again this quarter. Again, my name's Melissa Bunker. I'm the current Senior Community Executive for Triad Region for Cardinal Innovations, and I'm here with a couple of quick topics for you tonight. The first of which is a bit of an organizational update and an introduction. We have had a bunch of different, some shifting going on at our corporate headquarters. We have a couple of new people you can see there. We have a new Chief Strategic Officer that we've asked to stay on that's helping us to stand up our, get prepared for Medicaid transformation and for us transitioning from standard plan into a tailored plan in the future. We have a interim medical director, and we actually have, since this presentation was created, a brand-new Chief Medical Officer, Wendy Welch, who has started with us, and some changes in our network operations as well, which are also going to help us to get prepared and to get our network up and ready for a tailored plan. We have a couple of new directors that are coming on, a couple of different things happening. One, we'll talk about in a minute, about our governance model. That will be led by King Jones, the new Director of Community Health and Wellness. We have a new Programs Department that's going to be coming online. Our counterpart, Reed Nice counterpart Laurie Whitson, is going to be heading that up. That's going to have a lot of activity going on with our DJJ, JCPC, a lot of our juvenile things, juvenile justice systems, a lot of different things with Raise the Age. So, that'll be interesting coming up over the next couple of years. But tonight, I would like to introduce you, before I jump into a few quick slides, my replacement here for the Triad Region. I feel like I just got here, and now I have given the opportunity to actually move on to another region. My counterpart, Reed Thornburg, is here tonight. He lives in the northern part of Davidson County. I actually live in the northern part of Mecklenburg County on the edge of Cabarrus and have been transitioning, excuse me, traveling north to come and support the four Triad Counties. With the new governance model that was approved by our Board of Directors in Davidson County coming up to match up with the Triad, Reed was given the opportunity to transition and manage these four counties closer to his home, and I was given the opportunity to manage the remaining counties that he will be leaving from, which are, of course, closer to my home. So, for a good work-life balance, we were given the opportunity to swap regions, and we did so. So, Reed is here tonight for me to introduce him. So, I don't know if y'all have any questions for him before I jump into the rest of the presentation, or if you just want me to keep moving.
I'll just keep moving.
Okay, all right. So, real quickly, the two or three topics that I brought for you all tonight, not sure if you want to discuss all of them or not. The first one is just a quick overview of what does Medicaid transformation look like for Cardinal Innovations, and how do our members and our numbers change based on that? Then I had an update for you on where things stand with the Senate Bill 630 crisis bill, and then a brief update for you on where things are with the Senate Bill 549 and the foster care pilot that we're working on in all three counties. Any of that interest you, or something else, perhaps?
That sounds fine to me.
Okay, all right. So, real quickly, the main change that's going to be taking place with Cardinal Innovations has really already started. The standard plans are rolling out in two different phases. The first phase, actually, this region was a part of the first phase, so a lot of the members and families in the Rockingham County or other counties in the Triad Region started receiving letters that they were going to be given an opportunity to join a standard plan, and they would get to choose which health plan they would like to stick with. And then there are those that are left over, which is the rest of the state will complete this whole program by February the 20th. So, what does that mean for Cardinal Innovations? Basically, what that means is that as of November of this year, nearly 344,000 of those that we have served in the past will transition out of our health plan and into a standard plan, and that leaves for Cardinal Innovations around 79,000 who are very heavily involved in services that are enhanced services through Cardinal Innovations. Another 40,000 are having some, are critically involved in a lot of different services, and then, of course, we will continue to care for that indigent population that has no insurance at all. So, you can see our numbers are going to drastically change as we move to the tailored plan.
Melissa, how's that going to impact us in November? When we start this, we will kind of be essentially the rollout.
Yes, you are. Well, actually, it's already started. Your DSS office has already been working with a, it's a group called Maximus, and they are the company that was brought in to help people make a decision. They're basically the broker that helps.
But I'm thinking more of how's it going to impact those that's on the tailored plan in November? What differences are those folks going to see that's receiving critical mental health care today, and what's the change going to be November the 1st?
The only change that they will see is, well, really, the member and family won't see any change. The provider sees the change. It's how the provider gets paid. So, if a member and family is staying with us under a tailored plan, and they will then be receiving physical health services, those physical health services will be provided through the same mechanism they have been until 2021, when we officially are a tailored plan, and we will then take over those physical health services for those members as well. But right now, if you're under a tailored plan, things just stay that way. You stay under a tailored plan. We have heard tell that there are some people in the community that are receiving letters that have been earmarked under the state's algorithm that they fit a standard plan when they really don't fit a standard plan. They actually are supposed to be under the tailored plan, and so the state has created a way for both the family, Maximus, DSS, other organizations that are involved in helping that family get connected, to be able to fill out a form to state that they are supposed to be in a tailored plan, and then that should be working itself out fairly quickly on the back end.
But the service providers, their payment plan, their reimbursement, that isn't going to change tremendously, is it?
It's just who pays them. So, if, so basically, the recommendation for the providers that are in the region are, you know, it's basically who are you going to get, what insurance are you going to offer, right? You may not only want to offer one type of insurance, you may want to offer multiple types. So, the goal would be for said provider to be a member of any of the standard health plans that are available out there, so that if a member has that cross doctor or that cross physician, that they are staying consistent.
Yeah, and I'm thinking just nothing to delay the payment that would create an interrupted service type scenario.
Should not. Should not at all.
Good question.
I think what our chairman's getting at is, for the individuals receiving medical care, it should move along at the same location with the same sense of urgency. What they need to be aware of is if there are charges that some...
So you can see our numbers are going to drastically change as we move to the tailored plan.
Melissa, how's that going to impact us in November? When we start this, we will kind of be essentially the rollout.
Yes, you are. Well, actually, it's already started. Your DSS office has already been working with a, it's a group called Maximus, and they are a, the company that was brought in to help people make a decision. They're basically the broker that helps.
But I'm thinking more of how's it going to impact those that's on the tailored plan in November? What differences are those folks going to see that's receiving critical mental health care today? And what's the change going to be November the 1st?
The only change that they will see is, well, really, the member and family won't see any change. The provider sees the change. It's how the provider gets paid. So if a member and family is staying with us under a tailored plan, and they will then be receiving physical health services, those physical health services will be provided through the same mechanism they have been until 2021, when we officially are a tailored plan, and we will then take over those physical health services for those members as well. But right now, if you're under a tailored plan, things just stay that way. You stay under a tailored plan. We have heard tell that there are some people in the community that are receiving letters that have been earmarked under the state's algorithm that they fit a standard plan when they really don't fit a standard plan. They actually are supposed to be under the tailored plan. And so the state has created a way for both the family, Maximus, DSS, other organizations that are involved in helping that family get connected, to be able to fill out a form to state that they are supposed to be in a tailored plan, and then that should be working itself out fairly quickly on the back end.
But the service providers, their payment plan, their reimbursement, that isn't going to change tremendously, is it?
It's just who pays them. So if, so basically, the recommendation for the providers that are in the region are, you know, it's basically, who are you going to get, what insurance are you going to offer, right? You may not only want to offer one type of insurance, you may want to offer multiple types. So the goal would be for said provider to be a member of any of the standard health plans that are available out there, so that if a member has that cross doctor or that cross physician, that they are staying consistent.
Yeah, and I'm thinking just nothing to delay the payment that would create an interrupted service type scenario.
Should not. Should not at all.
Good question.
I think what our chairman's getting at is, for the individuals receiving medical care, it should move along at the same location with the same sense of urgency. What they need to be aware of is if there are charges that suddenly show up, then they might need to talk to somebody on the provider, including Cardinal, in the case of Medicaid. Is that a correct statement?
I'm going to have to ask you to repeat it because I did not follow. I'm sorry.
If you're receiving Medicaid-financed medical help in this county, should you not continue to go where you've been going?
For medical or for behavioral health?
Both.
You continue to go where you've been going. The only thing that's going to shift is how the provider gets paid for the service that you showed up for.
What I'm saying is, the person receiving the care won't be exposed to this. Is that correct?
They should not be. No, they should not be. They should not be. But as we've mentioned with Felissa and other county leaders, as you all have issues, if you do have constituents or family members who come and have issues, you can reach out to us as the Senior Community Exec. The other place the person can go to is to communicate directly with Maximus. That role of the broker is for them to work with the family to determine the best place for them to receive insurance from, based on the services that they currently receive.
Thank you.
So a brief overview on where we are with Senate Bill 630 in the region. Forsyth County is, has finalized their plan, and I did receive a draft plan from Stokes today. Davie is also rounding the horn on theirs, and the same here in Rockingham County. We are, we are getting very close to finalizing where the first location will be for those who are either aggressive or non-aggressive for an involuntary commitment. We've worked very hard on different opportunities and different ways to get, to skin the cat, if you will, and at this point, it's looking like we are still looking for the best place for an involuntary commitment person who is aggressive. We are still looking for the best location for that individual. Have a couple of meetings going on here in the next couple of weeks. I'm hoping to have some good news on that for you all in the coming months. But still hoping to get at least a draft plan and some, everybody on the same page, and a ratified presentation to you all for something to be ratified in September. And then the foster care system pilot, as you all know, the budget's tied up, the veto, different things going on in Raleigh. So pretty much, our foster care pilot is on hold right now. Those funds were tied up in that budget, and we've got a couple of workarounds that we're trying to get going, so the work group can still work to get us prepared to launch something in February of next year, but still don't have anything definitive to tell you at this point, since the budget is still locked up in Raleigh. And that's my update for you all tonight.
Any questions?
Questions? Melissa, one comment that I've had, and I'm sure you know about this. I've had a couple of, been approached about an issue that continues to, I don't think it's been resolved yet, and that involves, and it concerns me because we're on the cusp of the Raise Your Age, Raise the Age.
Yes.
And for placement of, of a consumer in a, getting the services they need in a Level 3 home, and we are, we've been skating around that one for a while. And I hope that's something, in the past, we've had a very good relationship to address some of those needs that are really outside of the normal types of treatment for the consumer. And it's just been very disappointing what I've heard on the emails and the conversations I've been a part of with that particular case. And I'm hoping that we're continuing to work to resolve that. And I think you know the one I'm speaking of.
I don't think she does.
I'm not so sure that I know specifically.
The level 3 that we're not able to place in a Level 3 group home. We're doing, we're doing some therapeutic work, and, but anyway, that's something we can talk about.
I was going to say, how about I connect with Felissa, make sure that what is in my brain is the same as what's in yours. But yes, absolutely, always happy to try to tackle issues as quickly as possible.
We'll get in touch with Reed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the time that I've spent here, and I appreciate the, everything that you all showed me as I've been here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and best of luck in your new position.
Does Reed want to say anything to us?
Reed, do you want to address this while we've got a few minutes of this one?
So as a current Senior Community Executive for the Piedmont area, so that's Rowan, Cabarrus, Davidson, Union, Stanley Counties, I've had the opportunity to work with various county managers there. I'm sure Lance is familiar with all of those, some veterans in that group as well as, obviously, your county leadership, whether it be EMS, health departments, DSS, and the like, have had an opportunity there for about 14 years to work with the leaders in all five of those counties. And so I definitely look forward to working with you all, working with Lance, working with county officials here to help improve the quality of life of members who receive services, not only behavioral health, but going into the future, medical health as well, which will be, I know as, want to share with you during the transformation and the transition from Medicaid is really a new horizon for managed care entities in the state who traditionally have not managed the medical health side of the world, and therefore will be expanding our workforce as well as the delivery of quality improvement, as well as care coordination in the community to assist those individuals with medical health needs as well. So thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to getting to know each of you and responding to your concerns, good, bad, or ugly.
Yeah, we'll get you a next-go-around.
So, yeah, so, and I am available, you have my card. If you need more, just let me know, but certainly reach out to me individually as a group, and certainly I'm available to address any concerns that you have or any discussion that's needed for Rockingham County. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number nine, Dr. Rodney Shotwell, Superintendent of Rockingham County Schools, approval of the use of restricted sales tax for three projects.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I also have Dr. Parks here, our Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Logistics. And also, before I get started, I also want to thank Mr. Isley for being here, representing the board, and also thanking him also for some of his input as we go through some of these projects. You know, his experience has been very helpful for us, and I look forward to the continued work, working together. What we have before you, there are a couple of, a couple of things on here. We're requesting a total of $661,800 from the restricted sales tax. I did speak with Ms. Galloway. She said that for fiscal year 1920, there would be about 1.2 million that could potentially be available, that would not affect any debt service or anything like that. And so these were some projects that are critical. I could give you more details about the school security things, but I would rather do that in closed session. But last year, we received $447,000 for the school security projects, and the $76,000 that you see right there will complete the final, all 22 schools. And again, I'd be glad to come back and share with you where we are in those processes there. Also, when we came before you with the one-time allocation, and one of the projects that we shared with you was the Reedsville High School roof, and I still have Mr. Travis's sage advice ringing through my ear, you know, I hate when you have to come back and get more. I want you to hold on to that for the third, okay? But at the time when we got the quote, we did not, they did not know about the 92 skylights that used to be in place when the school was originally built, and they have plywood there, and the codes have improved, so we had to include that. And so that's what caused the project to go $135,800 more than what we had anticipated. If it had been a normal roof, we would have been pretty close to the $214,000 that we shared with you. Which brings me to the other, and third and final piece on this request is the Rockingham County High School track. We did put it out for bid, and one of the things that we got back from Adam Carroll, who had been working with us on this, was that it was the timeline, more so than anything else, that kept folks from bidding. There were some folks that were interested, but they already had their summers, were already kind of booked. We had an eight-week timeline in there. And so what we're going to be doing, and we're going to be sharing this with our board next Monday in our work session, is that we would like to be able to put it out for bid again this fall and start construction in the spring. And I know there could be some fluctuation in the price based on crude oil, but it's not going to be that much of a change. But anyway, to have the asphalt price locked in in October or November, to still have it honored in the spring. And also, you know, the original quote that we thought for the track was 335,000, but as we have seen with some of our smaller projects, they seem to come in just a little bit more than even what the architects have anticipated. I had the superintendent from Wake County also share with me that they had a baseball, softball complex that they needed to have done, and they had to put it out for bid four different times before they were able to get folks to bid on the projects. It's a wonderful market for construction. So, isn't that right, Mr. Hall? And my brother's in construction too, so I know it's a good time. But at this time, are there any questions or anything about any one of those three projects?
Gentlemen, is there a question for Dr. Shotwell? Comments?
I'm just trying to figure some way to use our tires from the landfill in this track, but haven't come up with it yet.
Or recycle tennis shoes.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hall.
Yeah, I do have a question. Looking at the track, that's a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
And it seems like the project has grown over the last year that has been being discussed. One of the concerns that I think was brought up earlier, and I'd appreciate it if you or Dr. Parks could address it tonight, is what are we going to do in the future to prevent these things from getting in such bad shape in the future and to extend the life serviceability of these tracks so that we don't get in this shape again?
Well, I can tell you, before the Title IX softball situation that we had, the tracks were on a rotating schedule of about every six to seven years to get it resurfaced. So therefore, you know, the foundation piece was not damaged like it has been. But when we went into that, we didn't ask for any additional money. We handled it over a three-year period of time, and that did put some projects out because the last track that we had resurfaced was the one over at Holmes Middle School. And eventually, we would also like to make it a competitive track because it's under the old yard system. And so that would require some changes there, but that's, but it's still the best track that we have. It's just that we can't hold a track meet on there. One of the things too, this has also been something that Mr. Isley has worked, both with Dr. Parks and myself, there'll be some protocol in terms of what's going to be used on the, on the track, and what can, what could go on there, what needs to be protected for that. Also, you know, something just as simple as grass being blown on it when the mowers are out there. One of the things that we are putting in on the track is a little inlay, a concrete inlay, so that we can separate the grass from the track, because I feel like even when you're trying to do your very best effort to weed it, to keep it off the track, you're still going to chip away a little at a time, over a period of time. And so this way, we feel like that that's another barrier that we can have to protect that. The other thing we're also addressing in this project is drainage, to make sure that we got proper drainage for the whole place. And we're moving the high jump, not the high jump, we're moving the pole vault over towards the fieldhouse.
Thank you, Dr. Shotwell.
Oh, you're welcome.
Commissioner Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rodney, thank you for the update. I'm more concerned with the security issue. We haven't been getting updates on that, and I understand why you want to go in closed session, so I would definitely ask that we have a closed session eventually to give us updates on security, because I forget, how much money did the county give you for security?
It was 447,000 in the restricted fund.
And that was for the entrance, entrance ways and stuff like that, right?
Yes, well, no, it wasn't for the entrance way. The entrance way is part of the Capitol project. You talk about the new one over at Morehead that's going to go in? Yeah, but now the cameras and the badge system that we have is going in there. And I also want to share this with you too. Another benefit of having those badges as they get onboarded with each school, they're also going to be able to use that with the, with the printers.
Right.
That they'll be able to go, if they print and they go to, and they put their badge up there, and then their work comes right out too.
Right, yeah. I mean, I'm more interested in that because I like to see, you know, we get money, and I like to see some projects done, so see where we at. But, you know, I think it was last year or maybe the year before that, we were pretty big about tennis courts. Does that fall away? Are we concentrating on tracks now? I mean...
No pun intended, it's running in the second level.
Okay, because I know we met, me and Dr. Parks met out there and looked at some, and I get emails and phone calls about the tennis courts, so I was just wanting to see.
I do too, saying, you know, why are you taking the football practice field?
Right.
I said, because it's the only dry land.
Right.
So I don't have to have, worry about the tennis court sinking. What we're waiting on right now is, we did apply for another grant, and once we get that, there's also the possibility of a $20,000 to $50,000 grant with USTA. It depends on the different levels of things that you put into the tennis courts, depending on which end of that that you'll get from there. So that will be very helpful whenever that happens.
Last question, what are you planning with the tracks to keep where the football players go across the track to get to the field? How are you going to protect the track with that?
Mats.
You're going to lay mats?
Correct, mats. Not just something that you go get at Walmart or something like that.
Now, every school's going to get them.
Yes.
Okay.
As we do the tracks, you know, there are certain things they're doing. And I also want to put in the pylons, the concrete pylons, like you see, if you go to a Rockingham game, you see there's two yellow ones right there beside the softball field. We're going to do those kinds of things to keep people from trying to drive on there.
Right.
Now, granted, you've got to get the tractor on there to cut the grass.
Right.
But there is a way that we can do that, and I have a feeling that it's not just going to be the two of us that's going to be pretty vigilant about it.
I think Dr. Parks is pretty vigilant about it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Maybe on the 16th, I know we've got a joint meeting with the school board on the 16th. Maybe we could go into closed session and talk a little bit about the security measures that Commissioner Travis was...
That'd be great.
Just give us an update on where we're at.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions?
Do you need a motion?
I certainly could use a motion.
I'm making a motion for approval for the restricted sales tax for three projects.
I got a motion by Commissioner Travis for approval of the request submitted. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number 10, gentlemen, is the budget revision request, and I think we could probably do that as we sit, since we don't approve that, would be great.
Make a motion to approve the budget revisions for use of a restricted sales tax for three projects for the schools.
I got a motion to approve the budget request for the restricted sales tax for three projects for the schools. Do I have a second?
You do.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries. Item number 11, new business, gentlemen, we have nothing under new business. Item number 12, Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Travis.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that on the 13th of August, we had our second batch of apprentices that signed on with their respective companies. For those of you not familiar with Rock atop, it's a program that's jointly an effort by Rockingham County Schools and RCC and private industry and business to provide an opportunity for our young people to get credentials in various fields, precision machining, and several others. And I think next year, we're going to have a computer application program. But for the 20 or so youngsters that are embarking on this, it's going to mean not only a good paying salary, but very good chance that those young people are going to stay within this county, have a good income, and contribute to the economic well-being, as well as make a contribution to the overall economic health of our county. So as you see these Rock atop apprentices around, and there should be a batch a year coming out, ask them about it. I get great comments from all the industries and business people about our young people. In fact, the Rockingham County apprentices are preferred by many of the industries, and we're still looking for more industries to help sponsor this, but congratulations to those... looking for more industries to help sponsor this, but congratulations to those Rock atop apprentices. Welcome, Reed Thornburg. We appreciate having you on board, and we look forward to working with you. Hopefully, we'll get some more out of Cardinal because of your efforts. We'll certainly do our best to keep you apprised of what's going on. Jim, thanks for coming, and it's good to have a report from, from the public about how the Safety Day went. And I might mention, if we can pull this off within 365 days of the last one, we won't have to pay up again. So, so I hope we can schedule it, that prompt. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Berger?
Jim, I appreciate you coming out and speaking about the Youth Day and bringing some of the participants. Glad they are able to come and, and watch the process of some of what takes place. And also appreciate Tyrus Tatum's efforts as chair of that committee, and would all, and the committee, everyone on that committee. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I think I just saw the sheriff leave. But want to congratulate Sam on his appointment as chair of, for the state of North Carolina for the president's reelection campaign. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Mr. Berger's sentiments. Thank you for everyone who came out to speak tonight. Thank you for all those who came to the meeting tonight. We appreciate you participating in your government. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful week. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Hall, thank you. I'd like to recognize a few elected officials here and appointed, Mr. Bud Cardwell, I think I saw him here earlier tonight, from the town of Mayadan, Mr. Doug Isley from the school board, of course, our sheriff, Sam Page, has done, snuck out, must have had a phone call or something. Board of Elections, we have Mr. Roy Richardson, Mr. Tony, Ms. Tony Reese, Ms. Bonnie Perkson. Thank y'all for being here. Also, I want to thank Roy Sawyers. Roy is always here. He did a great job as usual last month when he was in Madison, and he's, does a great job of making sure that, that our citizenry across the county stays informed of what's going on, because we're working for them. And with that being said, that's all I have tonight. So I will have a motion by Kevin Berger before I get asked. Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Got a second by Commissioner Mark Richardson for a term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank y'all for being here tonight. We are adjourned.